Hi, everyone. I'm town manager Kevin Mizikar. It's a pleasure to be able to get you up to speed on the special town meeting warrant. We'll be holding a special town meeting on October 18th at 7:00 back in the Oak Middle School, our traditional venue. That meeting will have 16 warrant articles. The warrant was signed by the Board of Selectmen at their last meeting and we'll be working with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen at their two upcoming meetings, where you can tune in through SMC to learn a little bit more about the warrant beyond what we say today. So, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting the evening of October 12th and the Finance Committee meeting will be held the evening of October 14th, leading up again to Monday, October 18th, when we'll hold the special town meeting at Oak Middle School, our traditional venue. Before we dive into those 16 warrant articles, I want to introduce a familiar face to you, Assistant Town Manager Kristin Lass, who will remind everyone of the COVID-19 protocols that will go into effect and why we're all comfortable moving back to our traditional venue, Oak. So, welcome Kristin, and please provide everyone an update on COVID.
Thank you very much, Kevin. As many of you know, we are still in the throes of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're very excited to know that about 70% of our eligible population in Shrewsbury has been vaccinated, but we do have a full mask mandate in place, requirement in place for the town of Shrewsbury at this time, and want to ensure that everyone is as safe as possible at town meeting. So although we are returning to Oak Middle School, we are still requiring that all attendees wear a mask when attending the town meeting and keep that mask on throughout the entirety of the meeting. Certainly, welcome to go outside and take a mask break if required or necessary. The Town Clerk's Office will have registration at the traditional location as you walk in to the Oak Middle School right before you enter the auditorium. And we do have over 700 seats available within the auditorium. We will not be requiring town meeting members to sit closer to the front. We'll be allowing everyone to spread out, so we do ask that town meeting members who are not in the same household leave at least one or two seats of separation between each other. We will also have sanitizer available and ask that you bring your own as well if possible, but we are ensuring that we want to keep everyone safe at town meeting and have a very productive town meeting. So, we hope that you all join us on October 18th as you are a town meeting member. So, thank you very much.
So, let's start to work through the 16 articles that we are proposing for the special town meeting of October 18th. The first few articles are financial-based articles, and I think there's a lot of good news in these articles. The first, the first two I really like to talk about together. So, over the previous few years, we've looked deeply into how we manage our various lines of insurance that we have for the town. So, property, general liability insurance, and our workers' compensation and injured on duty, which is basically workers' compensation for police and firefighters. And we shifted more to a deductible-based type of policy with our insurance providers. And Article 1 will establish a special account, a trust fund for us to use to regularly place money in to pay any of those deductible costs. The theory behind using this method is to not have to overinflate the operating budget and burden taxpayers on an annual basis, because like any private insurance policy, we don't really know if we're going to incur deductible costs on any given year. So, having this fund to stabilize and make payments from will really enable us to only seek funding from town meeting when we need it, rather than, in the current method, we really have to pull down or request sufficient funding to cover all of our deductibles on any given year. So, Article 1 will establish this new insurance trust fund, and Article 2 will abolish a similar fund by removing any dollars that are left in it, which is about $45,000, and then using $55,000 from the tax levy to seed us moving forward with this new trust fund relationship for insurance. So, those are the first two articles. They're definitely related to each other and I really hope to, again, continue to level out and stabilize the town's finances through these various changes. So, Kristin, Article 3 has a number of changes, some of which impact the departments that you are overseeing, so I look forward to this conversation with you. But there's probably only a few times in our career that we'll ever be able to say this, but there's a significant reduction in this budget moving forward. So, at this point, as we're about two weeks away from the special town meeting, a little less, we're seeing the ability to reduce the total overall spending in comparison to what we did in the spring by almost $1.6 million, and that will have a direct reduction on both the tax rate and individual property owners' tax bills, which we can talk about in a minute. The largest aspect of this reduction comes because we finally achieved what we set out to do so many years ago, well before I was here, which is fund all of our accrued liability with, associated with our pension system. We achieved that through the actual aerial date of January 1st, 2021, so we're able to reduce funding for that department by $2.2 million, which is the one of two significant factors. But one of the other factors, this is the sale of Centec North, so Kristin, why don't you tell us a little bit about what happened there?
Absolutely. Many of you may know that the town of Shrewsbury purchased Centec Park North, also known as the Allen Farm property, off of South Street and Route 20 in 2002, which was about 20 years ago, and that purchase was for $6.1 million. The Shrewsbury Development Corporation has been working over the series of years to bring a developer to that property for economic development, for commercial and industrial purposes, and this year we have brought to fruition the sale of the property to Northbridge Partners for $6.5 million. So, we are seeing a realization in savings that we are going to be able to pay off that bond for that property early and use those funds in a future article that we'll be talking about here at town meeting later on October 18th.
That's right. And that debt specifically that Kristin referenced had several more years to go. I think there were six additional payments. We're able to reduce both the principal and interest that was originally in the budget in the spring when we went to the annual town meeting, so it'll be a reduction of $305,000 in interest for, that would have otherwise, or excuse me, in principle that otherwise would have had to been paid, and $46,750 in interest. So, we first talked about the reduction in the pension funding, then we have the Centec North debt service being satisfied, so we won't have to pay that, so we'll reduce that by a little over $350,000 in total. And then finally, the last reduction that's being proposed is the reduction in the total interest that's needed from taxpayers because we refinanced the Sherwood Middle School bonds, which were halfway through their 20-year repayment period. We're always proud to remind town meeting members and taxpayers that we maintain a AAA bond rating in Shrewsbury, which is the highest rating we can. It's our credit score and it's the best that you can possibly have as the local government. And with that advantage, when we refinanced those bonds in May, coupled with really good bond market, we were able to achieve a three-quarters of 1% interest rate on the final 10 years of repayment for the Sherwood Middle School. That results in a savings for this fiscal year alone of $152,387.50, so we'll be backing that out of the budget. So, again, those things add up to significant taxpayer savings. We are planning to use just a very small portion of that, less than $100,000, to make some or accelerate some changes that we had originally planned for next fiscal year as we went through the multi-year financial planning process throughout last winter. The first one of those changes falls within the town manager's office, and it's the creation of a second HR position for the town. We're an organization on the municipal side of 250-plus full-time employees. We have various part-time employees and all the functional requirements that go along with those. So, we currently have one HR coordinator position that's been in place only since 2018, and in order to manage that workload and also properly meet all the legal requirements, protections, and then also the more positive things like training, development, benefits of our staff members, we propose to change, have a title change and have an HR director, and then this new position will support that HR function within the town operations. So, we're proposing $30,000 for roughly seven months' salary for that position, so it's additional one-time FTE. We're planning for seven months of that salary, so it's critically needed. Right now, we're still pretty much putting out fires for human resources on a day-to-day basis, just trying to get through recruitment process, you know, much more turnover, quote-unquote, these days than there has been historically, so there always seems like there's a position to be posted, interviews to be conducted, and it's great to have HR professionals lead that. And then we're going to get into hopefully a lot more proactive things like better training programs, better onboard programs, better recruitment, support, retention, things like that. So, that's one of the two primary facets of the additional costs that we're bringing to town meeting. Kristin, the second falls within the Planning Department, and I was hoping you could just talk a little bit about that.
Absolutely. So, we are excited to bring forward to town meeting some enhancements to the Planning and Economic Development Department. Currently, that department is staffed by one full-time town planner, one full-time assistant town planner, and a half-FTE administrative assistant. With the adoption of the Community Preservation Act, as well as the Affordable Housing Trust, and the revitalization of the Shrewsbury Town Center and other areas for economic development, we see a need to enhance that department greatly. Currently, I serve as the de facto department head for Planning and Economic Development as I came up the ranks through that department, but with these two items in the budget, we are seeking to elevate the town planner to a department head level, which is a little bit of a $5,000 increase for the remaining seven months of the fiscal year, as well as adding an assistant town planner to our roster, which would be about $30,000 for the remaining seven months of the fiscal year. We see that the current town planner would maintain their duties as they're doing now, bringing on some additional duties of CPA and Affordable Housing Trust, and really bringing on a new assistant planner to help us with our economic development efforts within the town of Shrewsbury, as we really have a piecemeal type of approach right now. I do the best I can to reach out to businesses, the town planner does as well, but like Kevin said, with the HR coordinator, we are currently just doing the best we can to get by on a day-to-day basis, and with these increases in the position or bringing on a new position, we'd really like to be more proactive in the planning and economic development realm, realize some of the action items in our master plan and other planning documents, as well as be more proactive, reaching out to our businesses and reaching out to new businesses to want to locate within the town of Shrewsbury. So, that's a really exciting effort that we are seeking for the budget adjustment for fiscal '22. I'll turn it back over to you to talk about emergency management.
Sure. Thanks, Kristin. So, really happy about those HR functions and bolstering the Planning Department. I think it's two of the areas that we needed the most support in moving forward to help kind of move towards the vision of the residents in Shrewsbury, so we're happy to be able to propose this now and take kind of a half-step through this year and roll these within the operating budget. As you mentioned, we're also looking to make adjustments within the emergency management. Obviously, there's been a lot more focus on emergency management really from two perspectives over the last 18 months. One, everyone wants to shout out, which is COVID-19. Our emergency management director and deputy director have spent a lot of time really orchestrating financial reimbursements from the federal government, putting PPE in place, advising us on procedures, sifting through federal regulations, managing our employee testing program, which has been critical, especially in the public safety aspects of the organization, to ensure we have enough police officers and firefighters who are eligible to come to work if there is any exposure. They're always running towards the danger regardless of vaccination status or COVID status to help our residents, and our emergency management director and deputy director have played a critical role in those, that variety of aspects. And then the second real area is unfortunately, we have been experiencing the impacts of climate changes. We stood up our Emergency Operations Center two times this summer for non-COVID reasons for the hurricanes and tropical storms that have come through. The emergency management director is responsible for that, coordinating that, making that call with the support of the deputy director. So, given those additional workloads and duties, our additional emphasis and needs from those, we're proposing an increase of additional funding of $16,000 to compensate the director and deputy director for those services. The final area of addition, which is the largest within these budget changes, is we're shifting, again, all these are shifting dollars from the pension system to these other areas of the budget, so it's not new funding, is other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, and we're proposing to shift $923,000, again, from the pension system into this area to help the town meet its unfunded accrued liability. So, this is kind of our final remaining financial weakness. We're not alone in this. We're actually well ahead of many other communities, not only in Massachusetts, but also across the country in funding this accrued liability. This is a very measured approach. It doesn't have a detrimental impact on other operations within the community, but we do need to focus on it in order to maintain good financial standing and preserve that AAA bond rating. So, again, we're really happy here through Article 3 that we're proposing a net reduction of almost $1.6 million for the operating budget. Those tax benefits, it will prevent having to add about 25 cents to the tax rate, which means that the average single-family home in the community will have a property tax bill that's about $120 less per year than would have been experienced if we would have went with the budget that was originally proposed at the annual town meeting. Outside of town meeting purview, I do want to confirm that the Board of Selectmen is standing up to their commitment to use American Rescue Plan Act funding to cover other costs that are eligible through the revenue loss category. There's a lot of uncertainty going into town meeting. It's still not perfectly black and white with how those funds can be used, but they are shifting any possible expenses over to the Rescue Plan Act to defer and benefit the taxpayer, so the tax increase associated with both the police station and the override is marginalized as much as it possibly can. So, really happy to share the $120 tax reduction that we're able to set forth through this article and look forward to any questions of the Finance Committee and members of the town meeting. So, Kristin, let's just keep going into Article 4 and 5. These are also two, I think they're really housecleaning articles associated with the water and sewer programs. Those are separate funds within our operations and they're financially managed completely separate from the operating budget through the general fund. Article 4 will clean up and transfer about $360,000 from projects that came in under budget but are completed, and we're going to shift that into that really critical unit directional flushing program, which is vastly improved water quality for the residents of the community, so we're happy to continue that initiative. This will actually put enough funding in place to complete the rest of the town, which is a major milestone for us, and we're so happy not only to receive less calls, but for the primary fact that residents have much more clean appearing water coming out of their faucets and showers. And then also, Article 5 is very similar, but it's just related to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, where we're transferring about $89,000 from projects, again, that we've completed under budget through diligent management, and those funds are going to be shifted over into the sewer pump station improvement account. Again, we have almost 40 pump stations within the community and we need to provide constant maintenance to them, so this is just a way of retaining those funds into our more relevant needs. Moving on, a little bit of a different article, but again, such a great story. Kristin, I'll have you provide an overview of Article 6, which really melds two longstanding initiatives within the community. One is the sale of Centec Park North, and then two is the replacement of Toblin Hill Bridge and improvements to Nursery Drive.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, as we discussed under the budget article, Centec Park North was sold in September for $6.5 million and used the proceeds to pay the broker, to pay off the debt, and then there is certainly additional proceeds left over. And under Mass General Law, proceeds from any real estate sales are restricted for any use in funding projects where a municipality could potentially borrow. The Board of Selectmen, in concert with the town staff, have identified that the Toblin Hill Bridge project is really the next project we should be seeking funding for. This bridge was removed in 2018 because of significant deficiency, and it was a safety hazard. So, the neighbors and residents of Nursery Drive and Toblin Hill Drive have really been impacted over the past three to four years related to this bridge, and we're happy to bring this article to town meeting, which would shift $2 million for the design and construction of the repair and replacement of the Toblin Hill Bridge, areas associated with Toblin Hill Drive and Nursery Drive, and we anticipate that that would be able to start with the design shortly after this is approved and then move forward towards the construction to make sure that that subdivision is whole again. So, we are glad that we can use these proceeds to benefit this area.
Great. So, moving on to Article 7 is funding that we receive through legislation at the state. It's related to transportation network companies, commonly known as Uber and Lyft, so Kristin, what's the plan here?
Absolutely. So, some town meeting members may recall that there might have been an article related to this, I believe in 2018 or '19, where the town of Shrewsbury receives 10 cents per every Uber or Lyft or other ride-sharing opportunity that originates within the town of Shrewsbury. Throughout 2019 and 2020, there was 183,252 rides that originated within the town of Shrewsbury. So, under this act that equates to about $18,325 received into the Transportation Network Ride Assessment from the state, and those funds can be used to construct or reconstruct sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian mobility initiatives, and other programs, but they must be appropriated by the legislative body. So, as we did several years ago, we are asking town meeting to appropriate these funds of over $18,000, and we're working with the Planning Department and DPW on initiatives that this, these funds could be used for over time.
Great. So, we're happy now to be joined by Keith Baldinger, the Public Facilities Division Manager within our DPW. Keith, welcome. Happy to hear of this new initiative that you've brought forth in partnership with the school for Article 8 of this special town meeting, which deals with some improvements at the Oak Middle School, so why don't you tell us a little bit about that and we'll go from there.
Sure. So, the Oak Middle School was built in 1954. It's had a couple of renovations, the last one in 2004, but the windows in that building have, are from the 1981 renovation, so we have many failing hinges, weather stripping. We actually have seal issues with the double-pane glass. So, we worked with the school department to use the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program to help fund this. They fund 52% of a project if approved. We applied for this in May. We needed Board of Selectmen and school committee approval to do this. The project is right about $1 million. Part of the MSBA, so we've been through stage one of the application. We've had a kickoff meeting where they discussed the financial part of it for the town, and then we've had a site walkthrough to show that. So, now it goes to their October meeting for final approval, and if that is approved, then we have to, our first step is to work with a designer and a owner's project manager of their choice. So, the funding in this article will help fund that part of the process, and we're hoping, once approved, we can, ideally, we would do this project next summer. We're unsure about the construction market and supply chain, so it could go to the following summer, but that's our goal right now and so far, things seem positive from the MSBA part, so.
Great. So, Keith, this project is asking to use about $50,000 in free cash to fund those schematic design initiatives, but you mentioned that the project in total is about $1 million bucks, so I assume we'd come back to town meeting as soon as the spring to secure the rest of that in partnership with the MSBA?
Yes, that's correct. So, like I said, they will fund about 52%, so we'll be in the neighborhood of $450,000 to $500,000 request.
Okay.
At a town meeting.
From, you know, our previous conversations, I know we're being really conservative with requesting the $50,000. Likely, a lot of that would transfer over to the actual construction cost, but we just want to make sure that we can get through any design hurdles that we need to, for this project. So, will there be any energy efficiency benefits from this project?
Yes, absolutely. So, like I said, the windows currently are 40 years old, and between the weather stripping and the double-pane window seals that are failing, we should see a noticeable improvement in comfort in that building for the users, and then definitely we should see some energy savings. We have not gone through a full audit yet to determine what that savings may be, but I would expect it would be significant, probably 5% to 10%, which is a pretty good, fair amount of money for that building to save.
Great. So, that's Article 8, which is seeking the use of $50,000 in free cash to match any costs associated with schematic design for the replacement of all the windows at the Oak Middle School. So, thanks so much for stopping in, Keith, and look forward to working with you throughout the rest of the process for this project.
Thank you.
We want to switch over now at this point to a conversation with Principal Assessor Ruth Anderson. Ruth, welcome. As we moved through the springtime, the Board of Selectmen had a lot of conversation about being able to help individuals manage their local property taxes and provide any relief that's possible under the general laws. So, Ruth, since you've been on board in May, I know you've done a lot of work to try to find if we have any opportunities to enhance tax relief to residents, and I believe what you've brought forth here to us in Article 9 is an opportunity to do that. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about what Article 9 is and what would happen if it was supported and passed by town meeting?
All right. Thank you, Kevin, and Kristin. Article 9 is basically the town accepting clause 22G of Chapter 59, Section 5, which would allow people that are veterans who have served their country and have at least a 10% service-connected disability, as well as there are other parameters there. There are a bunch of exemptions available under clause 22 to apply for an exemption of their taxes of a certain amount, which is set by the state, if they are a trustee or conservator or other fiduciary ownership in the property. This is basically a housekeeping measure. There are other exemptions that are offered that have this language in it, that the person doesn't have to own the property outright, they can be a trustee, and the legislature never caught up with that as far as the veterans are concerned. So, this is correcting that measure, so that if a resident is a veteran but has put their property in a trust for estate planning purposes, they can still apply for this exemption.
Great. So, it will broaden the number of individuals who are potentially eligible for tax relief through your office.
Exactly.
That's wonderful. That certainly will be a big benefit to individuals, and thank you so much for you and the Board of Assessors for bringing this forward to the town meeting.
Of course.
That will be Article 9, and we look forward to having that conversation with the Finance Committee as well. So, we'll now move on to some additional warrant articles that we'll discuss. Thanks so much for being here with us today, Ruth.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kristin.
Appreciate it. Kristin, now let's talk about Article 10 and 11. We're going to pair those two together. They're related to the Sewer Special Revenue Fund, which again is managed outside of the General Operating Fund. These are similar to previous articles that we've passed. They're really related to- They're really related to how we structure our financial management and continue to maintain that bond rating. So Article 10 establishes a special purpose stabilization fund for the sewer revenue and sewer operations, and this is something that we've done in the past now with the water enterprise funds in order for that fund to maintain its own stabilization account with best business practices. So after we establish that in Article 10, we move on to Article 11, where we're proposing to place a little over, well, $1,170,679. Those funds are already on hand and have been raised by the ratepayers. We're moving away from our old system where we would place funds into a general sewer construction fund to kind of hold and manage those and into this really dedicated, transparent special stabilization fund that will be utilized for rainy day purposes or unforeseen needs of that. And then additional 200, so that's $970,000 of that transfer, and then $200,000 has come from just funds that we have on hand in order to build this stabilization account. So that's Articles 10 and 11 together, establishing the fund and then putting funds into it, which will really help us maintain that AAA bond rating and respond to any critical emergencies related to the operation and maintenance of our sewer system and wastewater system throughout the town. So that brings us to another block of four articles relating to zoning bylaws. So we can move into Articles 12, 13, 14, and 15 at this point.
So I'd like to introduce our town planner, Bernie Cahill, who's here to talk about the next four articles, starting at Article 12, which are all zoning-related articles. Also, just want to note that the planning board reviewed these articles at their September meeting and also plan to review the articles and vote on a recommendation at their October 7th meeting, which is actually this evening. We're taping on October 7th. So we'll start with Article 12, Bernie, which is an article to amend the zoning map. Could you explain a little bit about what this amendment is for and why this is on the warrant this year?
Gladly. So when the new Beal School was constructed, there was a necessary realignment of the right-of-way for Lake Street. When that happened, a small portion of the limited commercial business and the residence B1 business got shifted slightly. And because these zoning district boundaries are based on the center of the right-of-way, this also got moved. So this is to correct, it's a very small area on the road itself, which would become a residence B1. And again, it's based on the right-of-way, the location and the setback from the right-of-way. So that would shift. So I think it's pretty straightforward, but if anyone has questions, they're welcome to reach out to me.
Great. And all of this zoning change is on town of Shrewsbury property, correct? We had taken this land, we had purchased this land from the Glavin Center.
That's correct. Yes.
So no residents are affected by this zone change?
No, they're not.
Great. Thank you. So we will move on to Article 13. Article 13 is a revision to our zoning bylaw related to restaurants and outdoor dining. And I think with COVID over the past 18 months and people's willingness or desire to get outside more, the Planning and Economic Development Department, in concert with the Board of Selectmen, were looking for ways to enhance restaurants as well as enhancing outdoor dining. So could you explain a little bit about what Article 13 means?
Yeah, I think you hit on the motivation for this article. Planning and Economic Development Department, as I think everyone has been, has been quite aware of the rise in popularity for outdoor dining in COVID times. So what we're attempting to do here is to lower some of those barriers for businesses that would like to introduce outdoor dining and also to provide them with a clearer path for getting those approved. So there are three kind of parts to this. The first one is we do kind of touch up two of the definitions that we have for indoor service-only in restaurants and outdoor service. Furthermore, what we do is we align where indoor restaurants are allowed to be matched where outdoor restaurants are allowed currently in zoning districts. So we include now the limited business district, for example, and the limited commercial business district for indoor and outdoor service restaurants. And to fold into that is the final, the third point, which is we've reduced or eliminated, I should say, the need for restaurants that want to do outdoor dining service, the need to go to the zoning board of appeals. We thought that that was an unnecessary step for them and a barrier they didn't need. Instead, what we've done is we have worked with other departments, so interdepartmental, and created a process that these restaurants will go through internally with us and final approval to be done by the Board of Selectmen. So the heavy lifting will be done by town staff, and then the selectmen will have the final approval.
Great. We're looking forward to that, and we're really mirroring this off of the outdoor dining provisions that the state afforded once COVID came into play and mirroring some other communities as well. So thank you for that. Article 14 is an article related to wireless telecommunications towers and small wireless facilities, also known as 5G. So Bernie, if you can give us an update of why we put this article on the warrant and what this means in terms of wireless communication?
Certainly. So I think anyone who's been around for the last 20 years has known that technology has taken some pretty big leaps forward. And what we're doing here, the purpose behind this, is to bring our locozoning bylaws more into conformance with what the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, is requiring from localities. So there's five different parts to this. I'm not going to go through everything word for word. The first one is, again, we start with definitions, and we're updating our existing wireless telecommunications tower and facility definition to just include language that's more technical, technical language, which is up to date with what we contemporarily use for different products and what have you, antennas and the like. The second definition is we're actually including a new definition for small wireless facilities, which is an emerging new technology. But we are, rather than trying to define it ourselves, are referring to the federal definition. So if they make any minor changes, we don't have to come back for a two-thirds vote for an extra word here or there from town meeting. The second big change is to, well firstly, to insert that new small wireless definition and use into the existing use table. And on top of that is for all wireless telecommunications to be approved by the planning board instead of the zoning board of appeals. The reason behind that is most of these facilities are required to present a site plan, and site plan approval, as I think most people know, is the purview of the planning board. And we've reviewed many other municipalities in Massachusetts, and the vast majority of them do it this way with the planning board. And finally, sorry, number four is we're introducing a new subsection to the zoning bylaw. Within that subsection, and this is one of the biggest things that's happened in the last 12 years with the FCC, is they've introduced what's called an eligible facilities request. It sounds very fancy, but it's pretty simple. It simply means that if a wireless company is going to replace a like-for-like replacement of an antenna on an existing tower, they don't have to go to the ZBA at all. So kind of, again, speaking of lowering barriers, it lowers a barrier for them in that regard, and that's reviewed internally. So if they do something larger than a certain amount or too many antennas, it would trigger a review by a board. The rest of the section is pretty much, as I mentioned before, planning board is taking over as the review board in this proposal where it approved. And this subsection sets up the criteria and the standards by which the planning board would review wireless antennas and standalone wireless antennas as well as towers. And then the fifth part is going back to small wireless, oh, excuse me, one more page, small wireless facilities is, there are two sections here for small wireless facilities. One is small wireless facilities located in the public right-of-way. We've worked hand-in-hand with Selco on this, and what we've come to the conclusion is is that because the Selco right-of-way is essentially the public way and those utilities are controlled by Selco, they would be the ultimate arbiter for overseeing the aesthetic and technical installation of these products where they'd come to town. And then the second one is any of these small wireless facilities located outside the public right-of-way would then be the purview of the planning board, as mentioned previously.
Great. Thank you. It's a long time coming because the FCC regulations have been updated and we've seen some conflict with our regulations.
Correct.
So appreciate the planning board and planning departments work on that. The final zoning article that town meeting members will see in their pocket is Article 15, which deals with inclusionary housing or affordable housing within the town center. Back in August of 2020, the town meeting adopted our new town center zoning district, and we did not put affordable housing regulations in place in that district at that time. So could you talk a little bit about why this was brought to fruition and what this means for the town center district and housing within the town of Shrewsbury?
Yeah, absolutely. So the town center district, as you had mentioned, Kristin, was approved in 2020 by town meeting, the new town center district. We wanted some time to consider what made the most sense for inclusionary housing and where this fit into kind of the bigger picture in Shrewsbury. So what we decided is kind of based on some analysis, but also just the zoning districts that are surround the town center district, which is the B1 and B2 zoning districts residential, is to put it within the 12.5% category to match those surrounding districts. And otherwise, the other two parts are simply inserting it into the language of the subsection K, which is our inclusionary zoning subsection.
Great. So if a developer were to come in and want to develop housing within the town center, if they were to develop five or more units, they would be required to provide 12.5% affordable units?
That's correct. And it would keep us above our 10% and keep us moving on adding affordable units to our subsidized housing inventory.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll turn that back over to Kevin to finish out the warrants.
Sure. So Article 16, the final warrant article, actually seeks the use of $250,000 in free cash to acquire a parcel of land along Lake Street near, between, well, near SAC Park and in the area of Grove Meadow Lane. The purpose of acquiring this is to straighten the very sharp and off-camber curve that's located in that area. If anyone's unfamiliar, all you need to do is drive on Lake Street within that area of SAC Park, and there's a very sharp corner there that we're looking to improve the safety and permit better traffic flow in that area. So this would acquire a piece of land on the eastern section of Lake Street to enable part of the improvement of that area. And it would allow the Board of Selectmen to handle all of the associated closing and transaction needs for the acquisition of this real estate. Obviously, there's a lot of development in that area, including the new Beal School, that this will benefit the additional traffic. So that's the conclusion of our overview of the October 18th, 2021 special town meeting warrant. We look forward to seeing all town meeting members at the Oak Middle School auditorium at 7:00 PM on October 18th. The Board of Selectmen will be further deliberating this warrant and the motions on October 12th and joining with a moderator to consider a reduction of the quorum that's needed in order to conduct the business at town meeting on the 18th. And then finally, the planning, excuse me, the finance committee will meet on the evening of October 14th to vote and make recommendations on their position on each one of these 16 warrant articles. Thank you so much for tuning in. We look forward to seeing you on October 18th.